Good morning and welcome to our second meeting for the month of October. We have one more remaining on 29th. This morning Commissioner Taylor is on Zoom. Commissioner Fernet and myself are here. John John McGinnis, would you please lead us to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance by the United States of America and to the Republic with the dependence, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose liberty and peace and prosperity shall be
Okay, let's get started here. Ms. Tara.
May we afford your support, honor your diligence, and as we work the vote.
All right, I make a motion, we approve the exonerations.
Second.
Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Here's this one.
I'll make a motion, we approve the divide.
Second, got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Just regulations that refund.
John, was that an aye from you?
Yes.
No refunds, you said?
No.
That was very easy, wasn't it, Terrance? It's good to see you, Terrance. Tara, how's class? How's class going? Are you done? Sure, they'll be favorable. Okay, were vouchers and invoices, anything?
Yeah, there are a couple of things. First, for Smithers Fire Department, there were several things that I had concerns about. We can wait until we get to that discussion to discuss it if you want. Or at least I had comments. Let me see if I had any concerns. But Boomer had a reimbursement for that same dispatches software, that Penguin Management, and I thought we had done Chief 360 for everybody. Ken, is there anybody there? Is Josh there? Somebody who could answer that for me?
We have, but it's not to effect yet, so we're still in the process of setting it all up. That he's dispatch was to keep them going until we get it set up.
Okay, and they have, and they are agreeing to refund, you said?
Yeah, I guess that's what.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm fine with it then. There were no other, there were no other voucher issues. So I move we approve vouchers and invoices.
I'll make a motion, we approve the vouchers and invoices.
She just did, so you're second. Okay, we have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay, moved to approve payroll for 17 October.
Second, got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes?
Since I wasn't there, I can't participate in this.
I looked over. I make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from the prior meeting.
Second, got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
And I'm abstaining from that, Elizabeth. I wasn't there because I had to put my dog down that morning. Thank you.
All right, estate settlements, do we have any? No, we do not. Okay. All right, then, let's continue with the second, with Exhibit A, please.
Okay. I reviewed it and gave my comments to Michael, and I think it's good to go. So I move we approve the purchase agreement and the deed. I don't even think we have to approve the deed, but.
Just you need to approve the purchase agreement, so motion approve the purchase agreement, and then just do a catch-all motion to move to execute any and all documents needed to effectuate the acceptance of this property.
Okay.
Two motions, I think you need on this one.
Okay, so I moved for the first one already to approve the purchase agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. And then I move that we empower our council to execute the remaining, and President Brennaman to execute the remaining documents to effectuate the purchase.
Second.
Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, we, you guys, I read the minutes. You guys already did number two last week, and I'm going to finish my score sheets this week, and we'll get that taken care of and submitted to the auditor.
Okay. All right, then go ahead to number three, Gia.
Number three, one of the support letter for Wild.
That's the Whitewater Training Center. We did a support letter before for a different funding source. So I move we approve this. This is Ace's, what Ace is doing for the Whitewater Training Center.
Is there anyone here to? Would you like to come up and say anything? Introduce yourself to the panel.
Oh, Mr. Miller, Executive Director of Wild Institute. So it is a nonprofit that Jerry Cook started to do technical review and outdoor industry trainings. We're pursuing a swift water training facility, kind of like the Fayetteville North Carolina model. So it's a $3.6 million building that we can do swift water training in year round. It is a tank that generates swift water. We previously applied for CDS funds with Senators, we have a vote, and she's very supportive of the project. We just made it out of final appropriation. We're going for an ARC power grant right now, planning to cover some of the planning costs that will then go out to implementation. So this is no financial obligation on your guys' part. It's just recognizing that there is a need for this, that we are hit by floods more often and more severely than any time in the past. So all first responders are going to encounter a swift water event, and we want them to train. And of course, we would work to train West Virginia firefighters and first responders. So that's our plan for that facility, and we already have plans fitted to, or fitted to us out by Conchelle.
So are you, are you, is this the only entity you have in our county, or do you have other resources that you draw from throughout the state?
Like financially, or?
Your group in general?
So it's just a singular nonprofit entity that exists in Fayette County, but we work with partners, we work with PST Public Service Training and WDU Fire Service Extension. So they're going to offer to do this classes until we get our own instructed cadre up. So we have partnerships throughout the state. We're not directly related or tied to those entities other than.
And where do you get your approval? What body gives you the certifications to be able to train and teach?
So we will work with instructors, which is about the PST and WDU Fire Service Extension.
You don't currently possess them, the instruction, or the ability to instruct firefighters or swift water rescue?
Well, we do right now. So we bring in experts in every field. So like, we bring in experts in SAR, search and rescue. So we like those tracking classes, and those entities give their certification, as they're nationally recognized. We're just kind of a training hub that brings all those resources together for our firefighters. So like, we have a bone identification class, and we have an expert in that field come in.
But you don't do the actual training. You bring people in that do do the actual training. And what is your ask of the County Commission right now? What are you asking?
This is just a letter of support that states that you guys think it would be good economically and for our region to have this facility. So it's saying that there's a need in the community and that we will create jobs and draw tours into the area. So it's no financial amendment, no obligation of any kind. It's just saying, this is great.
That's good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, Gia.
Do we, wait, did we move to approve the support letter?
Oh.
Yeah.
That's a motion.
She's right. Alice is right.
I'm moving to approve it.
Yeah. I second it.
Okay, our next one.
What, John, all the, all in favor?
Oh, all in favor. Aye.
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 Okay, got it.
Support letter.
When Greg starts talking, I get messed up.
That's into the DNR.
Okay, this is the DNR training letter that Anthony prepared for us.
Okay, I move that we approve.
It's to designate the Fayette County Park Ponds of Children Class Conventions area. And Corey with the DNRs here today. What, does anybody know where the original lease agreement between the County Commission and the DNR might be located? Because we can give it to him, and he'll give it to where it needs to go.
Is anyone aware of where that may be located? Where we may find it in our file?
What original one are you talking about, Anthony?
It was, the agreement was approved at the Cryer County Convention Meeting. So we're looking for the signed agreement, the agreement signed by all of the, I can't remember if it has to be signed by all of the commissioners or just John as president. But there was some discussion about where it needed to be sent. If we could hand that over to Corey today, he can make sure it gets to where it needs to go.
Wilbert, do you know?
I've only seen that draft, but I've put a copy in your packet.
Okay.
Well, we can just, he can just sign the draft he has.
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay, and Commissioner Taylor, since you're not here, can we stamp your name?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, for the people of Fayette County, just so they know, and you know, we've got the letter in front of us, they can't see it. And all this letter is saying that the Fayette County Commission and the, we're going to, we're going to partner with the Department of Natural Resources, and they're going to stock the ponds down at the Fayette County Park. But ISQ fishing area will be designated from March 1st to May 31st of each year. During that timeframe, only children under the age of 15 and those holding a Class Q fishing license. And I understand a Class Q fishing license is disabled. Is that correct? Okay, would be permitted to fish, and that designation will continue as long as we both agree to this agreement. And you guys are good with that? Okay, and the people of Fayette County know that from March 1st to May 31st, we're talking about youth and Class Q and disabled people fishing. But any other time, it's open to the public that they can fish, correct? Okay, good deal. And you will agree to stock and provide fish to the pond? There you go.
Okay, and I already earlier moved to approve that letter.
Yes.
So this, this is to basically give our Natural Resource Commission the information. There's a public comment on it, but this is to say, our pond is kind of what we want, and that's usually kind of outweighs, you know, you guys are more local entities than what our Natural Resource Commission is. If you guys are in support of it, it's kind of a no-brainer for them to want to support it. So I don't see any issue with not going through, but it's a new, it's a new era. It's not, we're taking away from pond, we're taking it to new areas, so it shouldn't be any issue.
Brian, you got anything?
Good to go.
All right, I second the motion. Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five, six, and nine, we're going to discuss an executive session with our council to get some clarification.
And seven, I think, also to an extent.
Okay.
I think they, did you, is there a remembered, right, I mean, all of them, no? Oh, okay, all right, yeah, yeah, five, six, and nine, yeah.
Okay.
And seven.
And seven. Yes, I agree.
Okay, so we've got two minutes. Number eight, county trick or treat.
I wanted to address this. I don't know if you guys saw the list of, and I know we can't control what the municipalities do, but I think it might be worth sending a letter and trying to get everybody on the same page, because almost every municipality in Fayette County has trick or treat on a different day. Like, there's Saturday, like, the 25th, there's, you know, the week before, there's, you know, the 31st, that's when Fayetteville is doing it. But, I mean, it's all over the map, and I'd like to, for us to send a letter and just ask that we all try to coordinate that, because I think it confuses people.
Well, I mean, but do we have the power to talk to these municipalities and control when they do anything? I mean?
We can't, we can't control anything, but we can send a letter and ask that, that we consider coordinating Halloween, you know, designations in the future for the sake of, you know, people, not confusing people. I mean, they literally were all over the map. I couldn't even believe it. I was shocked. I thought it'd be like one of two dates, but it was probably four different dates.
Well, a lot of it has to do with Friday night with football and everything else.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I.
I know.
I could see the 25th or the 30th, either one, but that's a school night. Don't want to do anything during school. Yeah, Brian.
Hey, at Fayetteville, I know as a town that we decided, we always do ours on the 31st. I think Oak Hill does theirs on the 31st. Unless it's Sunday night, and then we, that's something that if you got to talk about, Sunday nights are kind of a rude one. Friday nights, we'll deal with it. But one thing, if you remember a few years ago, a couple of different, Oak Hill had theirs one night, and Fayetteville had theirs a different night. And it became kind of wild, because we were, we didn't, people gave way their candy here about 25, 30 minutes, because all the other towns came here. So anything that we could do to keep it all on the same night would be great, and help out small communities.
Well, I mean, I think Commissioner Taylor has a point. If you do it all on the same night, then it does prevent that happening, because there are, they're going to find it, and they're going to go, they're going to, you're going to have every town hitting every town, and you have to, you have to take into account the volume they're going to have to handle.
But. And then the traffic and the safety issues for the kids. I mean, I live at the bottom of the hill that people speed down, you know, in Fayetteville. Not far from, I'm guessing that was Brian talking, but, you know, there's a big problem there when that kind of thing happens. But I just think it's confusing, too. But does anybody have thoughts on what date Fayette County should do it?
You ever be thought?
I think it should always be on Halloween, unless it's a Sunday. I mean, Sunday nights just do not work typically for Halloween gathering. But most communities that I've seen around the state or other places that I've lived, we've always done it on the 31st, unless it's a Sunday, and then it gets changed to the Saturday before.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, I think that's a good approach.
Full night, it isn't full night, you can cut it off at about a clock, something like that.
Yeah, it's usually cut off by like eight or so. Okay, well, I move that we designate Fayette County's Halloween on Halloween from six to eight.
I would like to add to that, maybe, just discussing, maybe unless it's Friday night, unless it's Sunday or Friday, I think if it's Sunday, Friday, we may make adjustments, because we don't want to take away from our high school football nights. We really don't want to, and it puts a stress on our resources. So maybe can we amend that motion to say unless it falls on Sunday or Friday, that we may make another, we may look, relook at it. It is Friday.
This year it does fall on Friday, so, but I'm just making the motion for this year, not for subsequent years. But, but keep in mind, too, this is just for the county, like, not for the municipalities where the majority of the trick or treating is happening. They've already designated their days. But two of our, you know, our two largest municipalities have designated Halloween Day as Halloween, as trick or treat.
We're doing Friday this year?
I mean, we're coming late to the game here.
Yes.
We should have been leading, but we, we just neglected to do it. I'll second her motion. And we'll have it on the 31st, because that's in, that's in the outskirts of the non-municipality areas, so. Okay, we have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, taken care of. All right, now to county clerk.
Oh, wait, John, can I go ahead and move that we send a letter to the municipalities regarding coordinating Halloween and future years?
I'll step in there. Okay, got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, taken care of. Come on up, Michelle.
Morning.
Good morning. Wilbert's ahead of me. Tell me to give him a sec, but. So I asked for this to be on the agenda, because I basically wanted to discuss it a little with you all before we actually schedule the public hearing for the actual changes. What is happening is the state legislature passed a bill last session that will align the municipality elections, municipal elections with the county ballot, with the intention that those municipalities then join our county ballot, so that their races would be on the same ballot as the federal, state, local ballot. What that means for us as a, first, is that I have to make sure all are precincts aligned with municipal boundaries, which they do not as right now. So what I'm proposing that I do is to rectify that situation before the 26th election. It's going to mean probably changing a good number of people. My, my, this is a map of our current, the current bill of our county. Mike Wilbert.
There you go. Oh, you're still right in the middle of my screen. Drag it over to your.
We did this earlier. Well, anyway.
So how many precincts do we have right now?
All right. So, well, so this is our current map. The blue lines are our current precincts. I'm showing you the two most complicated, which is part of Fayetteville and Oak Hill right here. So the Meadow Bridge, Anstead. I'm just, what I'm proposing to do is just make them their own precincts, make them new precincts. Because if we don't then try and figure out where are we going to send those people that are outside of city limits? Like, if I try to make them a different, where are they going to go vote? It just becomes an issue of, is someone on the other side of Meadow Bridge, over on the Summers County line, going to want to drive or going to drive to Danies? To vote, which would be their next closest option. Same, same consideration on the other side of county. If I've got somebody, you know, in Boomer, almost over to God Bridge, or they want to want to go all the way into Hamilton to go vote, which would be their next closest option. That would, if we did that, if we just made new precincts for those municipalities and some of the changes I'm making in Fayetteville and Oak Hill, we would have to add five new precincts.
How many do we currently have?
Forty now. I'll take this to 45.
Well, the, what, yeah, sorry, what the implications are, I mean, are we going to have to get new machines? What kind of equipment and?
Yes, and that would be the thing. We would have to get new machines. I would have to at least have, I would at least have to have five new DS200s, which are the tabulating machines at the very, and I would need more of the Express boats, which is the machines you boat on. We bought some here recently in '23. At that time, it would cost somewhere between 16 and 20,000 a precinct. The outfit of precinct, that would give you DS200 and two machine, maybe three. I don't know. I reached out to our rep, and he's out of the office this week with the SNS, so he's going to get me a quote of current prices for those machines. There are two modifications I can make to that to get us to at least 40 to 44. I'm going to let Wilbert drive the, drive the mouse for me, because I can't see it when I'm far away. Pull it now, so we can see all Fayetteville.
So we're looking at $100,000 plus.
Another unfunded mandate.
Yeah, I mean, all right, so there's one that I would really like us to do, oh, the other way. There we go. Okay, so on this map, if you guys can see up there at the top of that screen where it says 51 and 56, and there is a portion of Fayetteville city limits up there, so, I think it's a subdivision up there along Route 16, and it goes down to the gorge. A lot of that is, is not abated. A lot of that is just riverfront, but there are some houses in there. There's about 75 people in that area. Right now, I'm going to have to make a precinct, separate precinct, because that portion is in New Haven Magisterial District. And if I put them into Fayetteville City Limits with 55 and 52, that makes them the plateau district. So we have to move that magisterial line as well.
Where's the nearest New Haven District for that, to that?
There wouldn't be, because they are inside city limits, so they have to vote on a Fayetteville ballot. On a Fayetteville city ballot, city ballot, too. So I'd have to make them, either make them their own precinct in the New Haven District, or I can add them to the, to Fayetteville into Fayetteville precincts, but they would be part of the plateau now, instead of part of New Haven.
Can, can we do that legally with jumping boundary lines?
The county court can from time to time change those boundaries with proper notice. Which for magisterial districts is we have to hang a paper on the courthouse door and in, and in each of those, not somewhere in a public place. For the precincts themselves to change those, there's an advertisement. We have to publish them back.
So what you're saying is basically with redistricting, we are pretty much going to have to create another precinct.
For those, in this, this particular case, if you want to keep them in the same magisterial district, yes. So.
So one is, one is a definite, right? Pretty much a definite, it's a 99% we have to do.
So.
Unless we want to change other things.
Do those. And I can make that precinct, we can make that a precinct for those 75 people and leave them in New Haven until we get to our actual big redistricting in four years, five years from that, the annual census redistricting, if y'all want to, to do that, that's. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because it's such a few number of people that, and it requires separate financing requirements. But the other precincts, we have to change. We have to get those municipal lines set. Smithers is probably going on our primary in May. I hadn't talked to the city manager at Oak Hill about it lately, but at the time, we were talking about, they were going to have to put a measure on the ballot in '26 in order for them to line up with our elections in '28. And I might as well do all these at once. I mean, I don't have to. We could do some of them now, ones we have to do in '26, and then do some later, but I would just pull the mandate off and get all that.
And we don't want people going 92 different ways. Just do it all at one shot.
That is one option to get us to 44. I could, we could send the people over in '28, which is Smithers, Smithers City Limits and Boomer, essentially, a little bit of Hamilton Hall. Some of those people are outside city limits. I could go ahead and make that a precinct and send those people to the Hamilton Union Hall if they're not in city limits. It's not, it doesn't feel that far to drive, but if you're used to going home places.
You're going to drive by it, aren't you?
As Commissioner Fernet mentioned, that he had to drive past Four Point Places to get to Beckwith Apostolic Church when he loaded over there, so.
I still did it, but I mean, we drove by, I drove by Four Point Place.
Okay. Up in Buckle, too. I had to drive past the Memorial Building in Fayetteville 3K8 to go to Montmorel.
It was Beckwith. It was, it's a beautiful county. I enjoyed the drive.
Like I said, today's just discussion. If you guys have any ideas or thoughts about this, I welcome those suggestions, and I suppose again, stateless legislature, I do not anticipate them wanting to change that. They were pretty adamant they've worked a long time to. And it's a good thing. I don't want to say it's not a good thing. I think you get more people voting. My big example is in Anstead. There's 850 people in Anstead. They had 33 people vote in their city elections last time. In the last, in the primary that they would be adding themselves to, they had about 300 or so people vote. So you get more people voting. It is, it is a, it is a cost share. We are already have polling locations open in those buildings on Election Day. I mean, it helps the county, it helps the county, and certainly helps municipalities with cost for the election.
Is this something that we have to make a decision quickly? No.
Yes and no, no. I mean, you don't have to make a decision today. There's actually, what I'm asking, if you guys mind if I publish for the public hearing. So in order to change precincts, you have to. If you guys mind if I publish for the public hearing, so in order to change precincts, you have to publish a month in advance. Uh class two with what advertisement, and then hold a public hearing, so I'm proposing that we do that at our December meeting. Um we, we should have these precinct changes done. By Ja- January twelfth is the deadline setting, ninety days before the election, you're not supposed to make any changes. Now, there is some caveat to that, we have some, I would prefer us not to have to make this an emergency when it's. Not an actual emergency.
How long will it take to get the machines once you order them?
It shouldn't take long, I don't, that's one of the conversations I'll have to have with Cam, that's our rep with the SNS. And like I said, he was out of the office and he said he would call me first thing next week, um. I mean, we should get them, if we get them ordered, I, I've never had them pick that, hey, long for us to get stuff, but. Then again, it's not, normally we have a longer time frame too, though I'm not worried about it, so I'm not really.
I would also like to send a letter to the um president of the senate and speaker of the house. Along with our delegation, letting them know that their mandates are helping us spend an extra hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good idea, I mean, they they really do need to understand the implications of these decisions, I mean, it's just like. Anytime the Supreme Court wants to create a new um diversion program, we have to. Find office space for new probation officers and staff, I mean, that's, it just, you know, and. I'm not, I'm not even sure that should be uh constitutional, but but the legislature part is, and that's a problem.
Well, I will mention, and I've I've already talked to most of the municipalities about this, but. Um state code allows the commission to charge them up to their per rated share of the election costs. Um in the past, you guys have not, Montgomery and Mount Hope, you both charged, charged them actual costs, actually add their items to ballot. Um but you can charge them up to their per rated share of cost of election. That would be a discussion with, between you all and like more likely legal counsel on both ends. Because there would be an M O N sign about who is responsible for what.
So would you be willing to, you know, he- help form a little panel that we can talk about this, such as you and myself, I would be willing to sit with you and 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 to get over to get. Get a good decision, and anyone else that you feel would be necessary to be in that, involved in that meeting to. Maybe, you know, work this out, a hundred thousand dollars, something we shouldn't enter into lightly, we shouldn't enter into lightly, we should. Give it every opportunity that if we can make the five mile drive, it's a five mile drive, it's versus a hundred thousand dollars. I don't think the people of Fayette County would mind driving five miles if if it if it called, if it saved them money. But I'm not saying that we can legally, we have to do it legally and we have to do it above board, so. Can can we just get together and speak and 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 get, maybe get a good decision?
And there is. So we have, we have, we do have to publicly notice it, so I will need to, if we have the meeting on December the tenth, I'd have to put in paper by November. The tenth, we have a little bit of time, um but I also don't have to, I, we don't have to notice the exact. Changes, I mean, we try to be specific, but if if we modify what we're doing a little bit between when I noticed it in the paper. And what we actually go on in December, there's. It's not.
Yeah, I mean. Thank you, I I don't, I mean, I don't think we have, we have a choice here, I mean, I think the choice is gonna be four versus five precincts. And I mean, I think, you know, the the difference between four and five, the twenty thousand dollars. Um compared to the overall price is gonna be nominal, like I, I mean, I think ultimately, we should do what makes sense. Um because we're gonna be stuck with the, with the bill, I mean, that's. I understand why John wants to send a letter, because and and I really think it might be worth too, John, um when Ruth returns, maybe sending out. Um a copy of the letter to the other, um through the county commission organization, to let the other counties know, like. You know, brace yourselves.
Yeah, especially some of the counties that are having. Finance issues.
Oh, yeah, I mean, jail bill, debt and everything else, so. It's gonna hit, especially these rural counties, you know, where we're spread, so spread out, I mean, it's killing us.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. We'll, we'll make, we'll talk.
Thank you, that I will, I will notice that, will notice that in paper, what's that, doesn't need to notice in pro.
Okay, at this time, I uh move that we go into executive session for attorney information. For the animal shelter. Uh reorganization of building inspector position and the Smithers Fire Department.
Second.
Uh we're back from our executive session, and there were no decisions made. Counselor. All right. Number five and number six, which are the animal shelter transition. And the uh animal shelter board are gonna be postponed and put on the agenda for the twenty-ninth.
Set a motion?
Yes, it is.
Second.
Got a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, uh number seven, reorganization of the building inspector position. Um Greg, do you wanna go into detail on that?
I I'd like to make a motion that we uh, we we can uh allow. Our our current building inspector, uh been a, who do, go to a a a position of reduced hours. It's, he still will stay full time, but he will work as needed.
No.
Part-time.
Part-time.
Well, part-time, but he is gonna maintain his twenty hours. Right for a week, and the reason for it is because we've great, we've gained such consistency with our code inspection through our. Uh through the, through his tenure, and he seems to be doing a a wonderful job. And we wanna stay consistent with what our um building needs are in Fayette County. So I move that we move Dan to part-time, but maintain the twenty hours a week.
So technically create a part-time position for building inspector.
Correct.
And Dan will continue to occupy that position.
Correct.
Second.
So we have a motion second on four, all those in favor? Okay, um last was the Smithers Volunteer Fire Department, Allison.
Okay, so um the Smithers Volunteer Fire Department, well, the city Smithers. Voted to disband its fire department somehow, even though I don't believe it had the authority to do it. Um and the fire marshal has taken some action um in that regard. And is gonna make a final decision on December third. Um it's my view that the, I'm gonna move that the Fayette County Commission. Um support the decision to close Smithers Fire Department, given that. It has uh been covered by Montgomery and Boomer for several years. Um and that it's had multiple um fire chiefs and multiple issues with management and staff. It doesn't have enough drivers to drive its fire engines, um they're they're just a myriad of issues, but also. Um that we advise the fire marshal's office, send a letter supporting the closure. Advising a fire marshal's office of that, and also of our knowledge about um the city of Smithers. Um role in supporting that fire department. Or not supporting it in this case, and also not having any, that it's not a municipal fire department as they might presume. So um the city of Smithers really doesn't have a seat at the table in this decision. Um based on our knowledge, and I think we ought to advise the fire marshal's office of all of those things through our council. So that's my motion and a letter.
I second it.
We have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that has ended our meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, bye, everybody.
Bye. Power, thank you with you, Mr. Tony.
I'll see, I don't know. You got anybody reach out to you guys, somebody wants me to talk, you call.